Leadership New Jersey presents the 2010 Forum on the Future of New Jersey. This year's forum, State of Change: Building a Culture of Innovation and Creativity in New Jersey. This program was recorded November 9th, 2010 at New Jersey City University in Jersey City. In this program, a town hall discussion, Choose New Jersey: How to Make It Happen. The panel moderator for the town hall is Dennis Bone, Leadership New Jersey 92, Chairman of Choose New Jersey, and the President of Verizon New Jersey. Here's Michael Willman to set the stage.
Yes, Mike.
As you can hear, Dennis is the Chair of this 16-person group of distinguished New Jersey business leaders who have accepted the Governor's challenge to help sell New Jersey, to get people to choose New Jersey, select New Jersey. So Dennis, and John, and Ralph would like to know what you all have to think. I'm going to ask you all to just come up to the microphone now and tell us what you think. To get you started on your thinking, of course, selling New Jersey is not a bad thing, but think about this: There are some people who believe that you shouldn't be selling New Jersey, that that's a parochial political boundary-based sell, that you should be selling a region, that there should be something larger than New Jersey being sold in. In fact, if you look at what Philadelphia is doing, there's a program called Select Greater Philadelphia, which covers five counties in New Jersey, six counties in southeastern Pennsylvania, and one county in northern Delaware. And they are doing, I think, something at least analogous to what it appears that Dennis and his colleagues will be doing. So that would be one way to look at a possible difference. So, come on. You guys are never short of opinions on anything. Jump up to the microphone and tell us what you think.
Do you want me to...
Sure.
Let me just describe a little bit about what it is, because I'm not sure, you know, what's in your heads about thinking about what Choose New Jersey is. But what we did to start to think about how do we attract businesses to this state, we went out and looked at the best models across the country. And all of those models have already been mentioned here today, you know, like Route 128, or Research Triangle Park, or Texas One, or Virginia now, or the Florida Enterprise Partnership. And the business attraction processes and procedures and strategies today is very focused. It's industry-focused, it's cluster-focused, it's globally-focused. So if you're focused on, for example, the pharmaceutical industry, what these locations did, they would have experts, let's say, in bio-life science, or in pharmaceuticals, or whatever the discipline is. They would be tuned into that industry all over the world, not just the United States. For example, a lot of pharmaceutical companies have roots in France. So they would be going to France, they would be understanding what's going on within that industry in France, they would be understanding if there's a company over there wanting a beachhead in the United States. They would understand those companies inside their own states or jurisdiction. They would be going to the conferences, and they would have marketing material very, very targeted to pharmaceutical companies. They would know everything about what makes a pharmaceutical company tick, and operate, and have a good bottom line, and then they would relate that to their jurisdiction. So it's not like the old marketing of New Jersey, New Jersey and New Perfect Together, or some of that, what we'll call just mass media marketing. But these organizations are stellar, they're stealth, they're very focused, and they get results. I talked to one of the CEOs of one of these organizations around the country, I asked him if he'd ever spent much time in New Jersey. He said, "Yeah, I find in New Jersey all the time. You know, I'm at White House Station, I'm in New Brunswick, because I talk to your pharmaceutical companies all the time." And like Jay said up here a minute ago, New Jersey doesn't do this. We're not even in that game. So also, as Jay said, we have to create this organization with private dollars, just for that question that somebody asked about, will this organization survive three years from now? So that was the ante. You know, we have 15 companies that's ponying up $450,000 each. You do the math, it's already just about $7 million. But we're creating a very powerful organization, or we hope it'll be powerful. We've been spending a lot of time trying to recruit a world-class CEO, a person, an individual who has done this, and has been very successful at this. And actually, the search firm thought that that was going to be very hard for us to do, but there's such a good buzz out there about, for New Jersey now, that we're actually getting a whole lot of interest. And we're interviewing some of the top people from around the country in these organizations. So that person would come in, set up the organization, decide what clusters we focus on, and then take off and start to market these clusters to the rest of the world.
Good afternoon. I'm Michelle Tuck-Ponder. I am Class of '95, and I'm the Executive Director of the Women's Fund of New Jersey. And one of the things that I would like to see is this whole campaign going forward with both a gender lens and a diversity lens. Because as we talk about this decision-making, where companies decide to locate, there's a lot of variables that happen outside of the boardroom, that happen outside of the, necessarily out of the company. And I think that when we fail to include those perspectives as part of the criteria or part of the decision-making process, I think that we really lose a lot of opportunities. Because as someone said earlier, companies are coming in, they're looking for a diverse workforce, because that's good business, not doing anybody any favors. And so, from where I said, I think it's really important, if you're really committed to bringing in a lot of different companies, I think that having that perspective present and visible is really critical.
We've got some more perspectives, but just to interrupt for a moment, two of you. And you know who you are, oh, just one, one of you, and still has one of these quivers. All right? Walter, you're up.
Good afternoon. Walter Douglas, L&amp;J, Class of 2000, Go Blue, and I'm the Executive Director for Administration at UMDNJ. My question is, maybe a comment and a question. Number one is, the comment is, my observation is that New Jersey is polarized. Even when we did our mock survey, we saw a big disparity between Central Jersey, South Jersey, and Northern New Jersey. And there's always this divide, you know, how far north is north, how far south is south, and when does New Jersey become united? So my recommendation, my comment would be, is, in this effort, can we try to unite New Jersey? Because New Jersey is often very split. And one example of that is, you hear the competition about, is the regional area closer to New York more optimal, or the regional area closer to Philadelphia more optimal? But what's left in the south is left out. And even one of the presenters earlier today said, "Well, you know, that wasteland on X and 8A where, you know, the warehouses are, that's counterproductive to what this was supposed to be about." So that would be one of the recommendations. My second question is, what are we going to do to help the internal audience embrace New Jersey, so that when people travel out and around, they will say, "Come to New Jersey, because there's something here that can offer your business?" That's my kind of question.
I'll start. First, to Michelle's comment before, Reverend Bill Howard is on our board, and if you look at our charter, we have an emphasis on New Jersey cities, because we know that New Jersey can't succeed without its cities succeeding, so that's part of one of the things that we're going to focus on once we have our organization in place. You know, on the north-south thing, certainly all of us understand that, and when we see it all the time, we see it play out in power politics, you know, it plays out all through New Jersey. But right now, Choose New Jersey is going to try to, in this, what I'll call rifle-shot way, try to bring companies in, or try to get companies to expand here. I mean, for example, South Jersey, one of the best examples we have is Campbell Soup, you know, doing that $100 million expansion, but they found a way to make that work for them, and we've been in discussions with, or I've been in discussions with Campbell Soup. One thing everybody needs to know about Choose New Jersey, there's no "there, there." There's not one employee of Choose New Jersey. We're starting with the CEO. So you haven't seen any visible signs, that thing about too early to tell? That's exactly right, because we haven't hired one person yet. We have about $2.25 million in the bank, and we have a three-year commitment, so we can, we think we can hire a world-class person, but there's no "there, there" yet. So just keep that in perspective.
Just jump in for a second. First, Michelle, just so you know my background, I'm the son of an immigrant, well, I wound up in Bucket Three there, when we all voted. My dad immigrated to this country, found a job, because there was an industry called the garment manufacturing industry here in Jersey City. Spent his whole life working down at the old Coast Guard building here in Jersey City. I don't know if you know where that is, but it's the only place along the waterfront that hasn't been revamped, because they can't quite figure out what's still in the basement down there. But I think Walter's point, you know, about north-south-central and everything is dead-on too, and it really gets to what you mentioned when you started out here, which is, are we going to be two regions, or are we going to be New Jersey? And I think that's a fundamental question that needs to be answered, because then we set this state up completely differently based upon the answer to that. And what I mean is, are you going to be just two big suburbs that meet in the middle, where there's a couple warehouses, to that comment, or are you going to actually try to have your own economy? And I think that what you're going to see out of Choose New Jersey is an effort, maybe the last ditch, maybe not, to try to make our own economy. And not necessarily completely depend upon what happens in Philadelphia, or what happens in New York. Because, you know, that's how we succeeded for the past 100 years. And that's how New Jersey Bell, and then Verizon, and American Water, and PSE&amp;G prospered. And that's why I think you see us trying to help make this happen. But that's a fundamental question, and I think we'll see, as we go forward, by whatever clusters, as Dennis said, we choose to support.
Just one comment. I think it was Walter who mentioned, how do we build the internal, I'll call it equity, the branding? And part of this is to understand how to polish the brand. But I think as we polish it for external constituencies, we'll also polish it internally. But it is important that we're all proud of what we have, if we're going to sell it to somebody else. It isn't going to happen unless we first convince ourselves it's the place to be.
Anne Strauss-Wieder with the Class of 2010. First, a comment about 8A. I mean, there's two ways of looking at it. One, that it's the worst market in history, the other is, it's the greatest opportunity. Because when else in the last 20 years could world-class corporations get world-class space for $2 a square foot triple-net? So it's how we sell it. So this is an opportunity. But more germane to Choose New Jersey, how do you envision integrating this marketing program with the toolbox of economic development programs and incentives? Pennsylvania and Georgia have been very elegant in integrating their programs to attract businesses, both out of New Jersey and internationally, to their respective states.
Let me just start on that. I think, I didn't see the Lieutenant Governor's presentation, but I think she probably described the three parts of the economic development strategy. That's what binds it together. Because Choose New Jersey is linked with the Business Action Center, which is the interface with state government, which has been a huge barrier to economic growth in this state. And that's one of the things we uncovered in our transition report. But it's also linked directly with EDA. And EDA works marvelously. It is such a great organization, as quote the Bank for Economic Development, and also managing those incentives. Again, when we benchmarked our incentives against other states, we found they were really world-class. They were very good. The problem is, nobody was out there trying to bring companies into New Jersey. We were waiting on companies to knock on our door. This is exactly what we were doing in New Jersey, waiting on somebody to come knock on our door and say, "Hey, we might want to take a look at your state. What can you offer us?" Versus these other states, other jurisdictions, going out there and knocking on everybody's door all the time in their targeted industries. So that's what we're going to try to reinforce.
Can I ask you a question, Dennis? Saying nothing about what you guys are going to do, I'm going to guess if we went back at whatever the right number of years is, and we had like John Corzine up here at the beginning, and he was talking about what Gary Rose was going to do, and how he was, you know, totally committed to this, and that was his job, and he was going to... Going out to companies, and when you heard, I mean, you guys, some of you who've been to these things before, heard Gary Rose talk, and I don't think, I'm generalizing, which is unfair, that his talk sounded a whole lot different, except that he was a guy in government, you know, down the hall or up the stairs from the governor. And you guys are not in government, but clearly you have the mandate that comes from the Christie Administration. So in what way, substantively, not in terms of the structure or who you report to, would your message be any different than what the Corzine-Rose message was?
I think I have one significant difference. Each business on this board's company invested $450,000. Typically, businesses expect to see results, and we're going to expect a return on that investment. Return on the investment for us is improvement in the environment, for our employees, our customers, and our shareholders. And for us, when New Jersey grows, we have an opportunity to grow. If Jersey doesn't grow, we don't. But believe me, squeezing $450,000 out of our corporations didn't come with a, "Hey, no problem, give it away."
But if I, just to be devil's advocate, you three guys represent companies that are tied to New Jersey.
Yeah.
You sell water here, Dennis sells a whole bunch of communication services, and Ralph sells energy. And that's maybe, you know, a gross generalization, but you need this to work. Are there other people involved in this who don't have the same ties, who are going to be out there? I mean...
John Strainfeld, Prudential, he doesn't happen to be here. Bob Hugan of Silgene, he doesn't happen to be here. Kevin Rigby of Novartis, Novartis doesn't happen to be here. So we have CEOs that have chosen New Jersey, who have tens of billions of dollars of assets here, to tens of thousands of employees, and they want their companies to be successful here, and their employees to be happy. And I would say that's a completely different paradigm than a government paradigm. Because all of these, all of these companies, and all of the leadership are, and it's all about execution. I mean, just what you see in going through the CEOs, or what you don't see, what our will tell you, is just tremendous due diligence in trying to find the best CEO in this country to come in here and lead this effort. And at first, I'm not saying that person here, she's going to be from outside of New Jersey, but we're certainly going to need a nation-wide search to find that person.
Come on, folks. Okay.
Yes, I have a question. My name is Don Sutton. I'm leadership New Jersey, Class of 2010. And I have a question. Whether or not the group that's forming, Choose New Jersey, has made a provision to look internally. I worked at Boston School of Writers, and we tend to get a lot of information about what has happened with companies in which New Jersey has been traditionally on our hand, but that hasn't happened with those companies in New Jersey. In other words, are you taking steps to look internally at the organizations that are growing, that are expanding their markets, that are doing very well, and are located in New Jersey, and are not expanding here? My other question is about what provision you may be making on the outreach portion to look very hard at a, you know, killer marketing advertising program. We've seen the success of, you know, I Love New York, there have been a number of, well, New Jersey New somehow had some appeal, conforming to some rather standard mass marketing advertising publication values, like celebrity personality, killer parodies, and humor, et cetera, in ad pub, is what seems to work. We've had some mention here today about Jeff Daniels speaking for the state of Michigan. And one interesting point about that is Jeff Daniels is one of the actors with the very highest likability ratings in film. And then chosen to look at him, he's a native, and use him nationally in their advertising and publicity, looking very hard at that. I think it's a very important part, I want that the organization is providing some of that.
Can I say something to that? Those were consumer advertising programs. You're talking about a B2B program, but there is a whole school that thought that says a B2B program, you know, can sit on a platform of positive recognition for any kind of, you know, communications outreach like that. So I'm just curious, what is the answer to this gentleman's question? Are you contemplating any kind of advertising campaign?
You know, we're going to have a professional staff that's going to make those kinds of decisions, again, people who work in this industry. I'll just tell you, the focus groups that we did with the relocation experts, the people who relocate companies, people like Jake Biggs, who's out here, who do this day in day out, and I think Jay Alindit, who's sitting here, basically was questioning the value of this mass marketing advertising campaign. But let's say you picked five clusters, you know, let's say you picked finance, bio-life sciences, transportation and logistics, telecommunications maybe, renewable energy maybe. And let's say that you had a marketing program targeted toward those specific industries that was really deep, and really could link to those companies, how they could be successful in New Jersey, and then use that very targeted marketing to go sell to those companies. That's the way the best can class. If you go to Research Triangle Park down in North Carolina, it's been wildly successful, they've recruited companies from New Jersey. You know, that's how they're doing it. It's a different marketing person. But I don't want to sit here and go, "You know what? I know nothing about this." That's why we're hiring some professionals who know this, and who have been successful in relocating companies in a global market. So we have some ideas, but we're going to let the experts really do it.
Rob Lewdowski, L&amp;J, 2010. Dr. Rob Lewdowski, 2010. Rob Lewdowski, 2010. Still, get the things out again, Alan. I have a question about the state's structural debt deficit, its pension obligations, health care obligations, and how much of an obstacle the state's finances are when you're going to go out there to peer-to-peer and talk to companies, and say, "Come to New Jersey." Because you can say, "Look, this is what your tax obligation might be." But they might also say, "But I also see down the road that things may collapse here, and the state's going to come back to you for more taxes." So I'm curious, how important is reform going to be, government reform, before we even even...
I think it's fundamental, right? And that's why you see the Governor behaving the way he's behaving right now, trying to bring down that structural cost, whether it be the tunnel. I'll tell you how I voted. We were crazy if we were going to take on all the risks of that project. And I don't think any of us knew that when we had the groundbreaking. But there's nobody up here, I think, that would take on a project that had five partners, and the other four were all sitting around saying, "Well, he's got all the risk, great job." We wouldn't do it. So we may disagree, or, you know, in mannerisms and other things that go on, and everybody's in part of that opinion, but you've got to set the example, and you're trying to run the place the best you can. And we're seeing that now, and I think that will help, as Dennis said, to create the buzz. Well, jeez, you're actually doing something there, so let's get on board.
Jay?
Yes. Leadership New Jersey 2005, Leadership Trenton 2008, Go Yellow. In both cases, I think. Anyway, I wanted to say that I wanted to encourage this group that's forming to think not only private, public, not-for-profit government, but beyond that, venture capitalists, philanthropists, business chambers of commerce, investment capital, community organizations with booster groups, foundations, and last but not least, higher education, as well as K through 12. All of these sectors need to be represented in this organization. And also, the other point I'll make is that organizations like Camden Futures, Newark Alliance, New Brunswick Tomorrow, we've seen it all in a regional kind of a way. So now the question becomes, how do you pull all of those various efforts and organizations and entities together, so that the past is prologue for the future?
I'll just start. You know, our biggest challenge of standing up Choose New Jersey was to get a multi-year financial commitment, so that we could hire and get really talented people to come here. Because nobody's going to come here if you tell them you have one year of revenue, so. But we certainly, and we worked with the group that was talked about on some of the panels, that real estate organization, Ted Zingarian, and that group, we worked with those kinds of folks. Now, if you think about developers and law firms, they don't have the ability to own you $450,000. But what most of the states do, and most of the regions do, that have these kinds of models, is, I don't want to call it a second tier, but your point's a really good one. We need to get all the muscle in the state, all the shoulders in the state, all pushing the same way. And we identified a strategy that, once we get the organization stood up, and have funding sound, and I think we're there, we just got to get the staff hard, then we will start this tier two, and we'll find ways to involve all those organizations who they do, and some of those that you have. I'll put a special asterisk on higher education, because when we did the transition report, we found out that that was really a huge deficit for New Jersey. If you go to Massachusetts 128, if you go to Research Triangle Park, or you go out to Silicon Valley, or Ohio, or any of those places that are, because it's kind of a poster child, you'll see that higher education is just so intertwined with the economic development efforts. If there's like a nanotechnology company that's coming in, and you want to court them, then it's going to be the dean of the engineering school of nanotechnology that's going to be on their very first meeting, and you'll start to get that kind of an interaction, because the universities are so intertwined with the economic development efforts. It doesn't exist in New Jersey. Again, that's another huge opportunity for us, the leverage in the future, that we don't do now. If you think about all this industry and those clusters that we're trying to get, think about Herman is doing down with the FAA tech part, think about the technology companies there. We need that partnership entirely.
Hi. My name is Michelle Scott, Leadership New Jersey 2011. Very excited to hear about what Choose New Jersey is planning to do, and I think it's a good start. I worked for Deutsche Bank for 17 years, and as of August, we had an initiative called Next Gen. Now, Next Gen, you might think would be looking at our higher education, K through 12, and seeing how we can build those relationships and bring those folks into our organizations. Now, Next Gen meant sending jobs over to Bangalore, okay? Now, how we planned to spoke out our organizations that we're trying to lure into New Jersey to say, "Yes, we want you to come to New Jersey, we want you to bring your front offices in addition to your back offices to New Jersey, and we want to promise that of you that you will look at the Next Generation as being New Jersey."
Amen, right? But again, I think it's all about alignment, all right? So, you know, once we get alignment around what clusters make sense for New Jersey to serve, then you get that alignment all the way through. You know, you're talking about the financial industries. And so in the financial industries, I don't know, we have to invest alignment. Is higher ed focused on supporting New York City back office and New York City front office? Not sure. Not sure what university you would point to and say, you know, "That's the NYU Stern School of Business." I don't think that exists here right now. So we haven't made that alignment. So that's why, when we go to have a conversation with Deutsche Bank, what are we bringing to the table? And I'll give you an example. I was just in the little world of PSE&amp;G, we don't know where to hire power engineers from. Closest school, I think, is Georgia Tech. Georgia Tech, probably the closest school to find power engineers. Peggy, Peggy Pangos here from our HR group. I mean, we don't, we tried to work with L&amp;J, we've tried to work, and it's tough to get that going. So how amazing is that? We're trying, right? Steve, you could say we have a good snare. Columbus, Ohio, that's where FirstEnergy is, we don't talk about those guys. But it's about getting that alignment.
Go ahead.
Hi. My name is Sean O'Neal. I'm a affiliate, and yet with the Leadership New Jersey, but a good friend of mine is. Just to buttress, Dennis, one of the group's point of focus, perhaps working with a certain area, a certain triangle park-like scenario. 10 years ago, I was working with a company at UMDNJ, it's a startup, Bubble. We had one big client, and then it just... and it's Farming Time, and it's Sanofi, and it's, we had created a business that was pretty successful. Unfortunately, we couldn't get a lot of traction with, even though the university gave him the space, it was a perfect scenario for that type of incubation scenario, and it didn't fly. But what happened is, Ventus saw the possibilities, they basically shipped, took us the ropes apart and shipped it back to Germany. So it can be done. I think it needed to be, you know, again, coordinating, the idea that it can be done is a huge one. But I guess my question to you is, besides hopefully putting forth a possibility of working with your group on some lower level, is the fact that what can you offer a business coming in for a tax break? How can you connect that to some real benefit that a business is gonna get? In terms of how many years can you guarantee, "Hey, yeah, you guys come here, we can give you this, this, and this." It's not just gonna be about, "Great idea, PR wonderful," then it goes away.
I'll just start. The incentives that I briefly described before are very good. You know, the Urban Transit Hubs credit, you know, those are usually 10-year credits. So if you invest $100 million in a project in one of those nine cities, then you're gonna get from 80% to 100% of that back, you know, in a credit spread over 10 years. So there's a lot of certainty there. And again, those are very powerful incentives. Just one thing that's just in the back of my head that's bothering me a little bit, is all, most of the discussion so far has talked about bringing companies into the state. Choose New Jersey, 50% or so of our activity is gonna be trying to keep those clusters that are here to stay here and not lose them, and get them to expand here. So many of those, I think, Dean or somebody talked about the ING, where, you know, every year the governor's office would come in and talk to them about promising, you know, good communication and things like that. But we see that's a huge opportunity or threat if we don't do it right, to keep our existing companies here. And if you think about it, if you keep your existing companies here and they expand here, what kind of a signal does that send to that industry outside of the state?
One other point, I think we have to focus on, the vision of this is ongoing. So it's market research. So there's always a competition, right? So the package that works today may not work tomorrow, or the package for a particular industry group may not be appealing to another. So the real benefit of this is gathering the market data, feeding it back to the government. Obviously, it's gonna be the state's choice in terms of what kinds of incentives they choose to offer. EDA, can you do financing? It's the market data to actually make the right decisions to put packages in place that are selling, that people actually want.
Steve Morgan, Class of '05. John, I just want to take that concept maybe one step further. So how will you affect what happens at state government? So, for example, Lieutenant Governor told us today about, you know, the one-step process and about how the governor's administration is working to fix what's functional in the state. What role are you gonna play in, you know, making that feedback a little complete? And as you find holes or problems, how are you gonna have an impact on giving those problems results?
It's formalized in that triangle that the Lieutenant Governor discussed. I know she talked about that piece of that. The Lieutenant Governor has attended every meeting and every phone call that we've had so far, and that's her commitment. Because effectively, what she has said and what the governor has said is that we want Choose New Jersey, any lessons that you learn about what it takes, or is there a particular problem in New Jersey that's really causing a lot of failures here, you know, to bring that, those learnings back to government. So right now, we're working with an administration that's embracing Choose New Jersey. Now, there's a lot of cynicism about their, "Well, when the next administration comes, will they embrace Choose New Jersey?" And my response to that is typically, "Well, if Choose New Jersey is hitting on all cylinders, and we are successful like some of these other areas, then I don't know why they wouldn't, because we're a non-political or apolitical, you know, business in five months, a trip."
My name is Bob Morrison. I'm an affiliate that was on an earlier panel that Herman moderated. And we talked at that panel about how do we connect the focus you have with Choose New Jersey on keeping business and attracting more business to the other statewide initiatives that are addressing other things that are equally important to quality of life issues and attracting businesses here, whether that's Sustainable New Jersey, obviously you talked a little bit about higher ed related to innovation in New Jersey, there's arts plans. So in other states that we've visited, and there's a contingency of us going to a session in Oklahoma City where creative innovation districts from around the world are meeting to talk about economic development, education, culture, and commerce, and how they all tie together. The question that I have is, how do we try to replicate something similar here that's a little bit bigger than just attracting businesses and keeping businesses, but is also tied to the other initiatives that address the broader issue of quality of life care in New Jersey?
That's a great question. So how do we do that? Maybe we need to take some recommendations and ideas. It's a great point.
I think a lot of it happens naturally. Many of us serve on those other entities that you mentioned. And I know it'll tie together with the governor's office, whether it be through the Lieutenant Governor or the governor himself. But, you know, you talk about sustainability in New Jersey, I mean, it's very clear that that effort helped spur what we started to see in the renewables area, that Dennis mentioned, one of the areas that are being considered to, that's a growth opportunity. So they intertwine, just the fact that there's a commitment to offshore wind could create a great opportunity for an industry to be planted.
That actually does tie to what I wanted to suggest. And I wouldn't, with all due respect, I wouldn't expect that the business community or the governor's office, or even the Lieutenant Governor's office, would really know all of what's going on in the state. Not really. So what I would suggest to this group, because I'm really excited about what you're doing, is that if you use this forum, there are over 1,000 LNJ fellows. We are connected. We are doing the work out in the state, and we know of groups that we're connected to. So what I would suggest is, if your next level down is an advisory group or whatever format that takes, that you tap into this organization to, for recommendations about what groups you should be connected to, to be able to really get a comprehensive group working with you. That's my suggestion.
LNJ 92, any reds here?
Hi, I'm Heidi Delmo, Class of '08. And I'm green, actually. So this is my question for you. There's a lot of engineering firms that are here. And frankly, our firms generate a lot of other things for the political process, and the nonprofits, and our families to pay our taxes. So I want to make sure that when these businesses actually come into New Jersey, that the design community, the architects, the engineers, the planners are included in that process. So when you come to New Jersey, you have to use New Jersey firms to do design work. Because union labor will get their piece, we have to get our piece also.
Hi, I'm Carmen Henley. I'm not affiliated with LNJ, but I just, what I did want to get back to is this thing about half of the companies that we're looking at are already in New Jersey. And again, the comment about not having the engineers with you. And from the higher ed perspective, it's a very long process to create programs, academic programs, that will provide these experts that you need. But I'm thinking that long-term, that should be one of the things, partnerships with existing higher ed institutions, whether state or private. And by partnerships, I mean support from the outside to push through these programs. That's number one. But that's long-term. Short-term, I was thinking, these are existing companies, but are there enough opportunities at these companies for the current students at the institution, whether it's internships or co-ops, all of these things? I hear of a colleague whose daughter attends a state school that's not in New Jersey, and they have these huge recruitment events. And they end up working in New Jersey. I don't hear as much about these huge recruitment events in the state schools in New Jersey. So that was one of the things I was thinking should maybe be one of the steps in terms of this whole partnership, especially with higher ed.
All right, here's what we want to do. We respect the time of Ralph and John and Dennis. We appreciate that they have joined us. There's a little housekeeping to do at the end. Let's see if we can do this. Let's see if we can give these guys five more ideas, not fully-formed ideas, just five little touchstone kinds of ideas to sort of finish up this part of the day. And I will do my part with two. One, I think we have to somehow, and I realize it's not a public institution, leverage the extraordinary brand equity that exists in Princeton University. All right? Number two, if I were these guys, I would create a national competition for, with dollars behind it, saying that in particular market segments or clusters, we want this kind of company. Let's just say it's a life sciences startup kind of thing. And we have X number of dollars available, so we are doing an international search. If you have the idea, the next generation of whatever it is, product or service, in your business, apply to New Jersey. We're open. We want you. We'll do all this. We'll set you up in an innovation zone next to, you know, the Institute for Advanced Studies at Princeton, and we'll do this and that, blah, 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 blah. Those are my two. You're next.
Stan Bush, each twin architects and engineers, Class of 2010, blue. Just taking some of the ideas that were just put out here recently, repackaging them. It would make sense to me that you represent an elite group of companies with a lot of visibility and passion. There are a lot of small and modern companies throughout New Jersey. In a sense, what I'm thinking is, we need to develop a farming of companies that can align with your interests, same interest you're proposing. And the expression used earlier, we need all our shoulders pushing in the same direction. If we've got efforts happening elsewhere in the state that aren't aligned with these efforts, we're gonna work against our own purposes. And we've got a lot of companies that are looking to do this, not only on the private side, but they are county economic development operations and the like, where our businesses are lined in and lined up on. So I think coalescing some of that, harnessing some of that energy as a continuum may help as well.
So we're gonna call it the Trant Thunder Blue Claws Economic Development Project. Travis?
I want to amplify your thought about Princeton. And I would suggest to the group to take a visit up in Manhattan, see what Yale has done, and partner with Connecticut, and partner in the city of Manhattan, and do that first before you make that phone call and have that done with the head of Princeton. If you do that, you can see the model of where it's working. And so I think that, in fact, that is my number one of how to make this happen, is to leverage Princeton. And to do that by showing them how it's been done, particularly at a school that they consider is their line.
Okay, we'll take two more. And that doesn't mean that we'll turn somebody away, but we'll find a way to get your ideas in front of Dennis and these guys. But you are the penultimate presenter. That means next to Josh, right?
Oh, I know.
Is that what penultimate means? Somebody help me out here. Get out your PDA and must have it on the stationery. All right.
Hi, thank you very much for a very interesting panel and for this wonderful upcoming organization. My name is Kameo Stronghanna. I'm the Vice President of the University Advancement here at NJCU. And I just want to make sure that we don't go away, especially with this organization, without advocating for the bond issue, the capital bond issue for the public universities, especially in the view of the public-private partnerships. I think that's a very important initiative that has been put forward with the EDA. And I believe that for companies that are coming into New Jersey and for companies to stay in New Jersey, that's one of the few areas that are developing higher education and healthcare in terms of construction and development. And I believe all of you three companies are, you know, this is an area for you that's very important. And I would like this important organization to really look at that bond issue as a place for advocacy.
And the final thing, ultimately, capstone, the...
I'm Carol Crone. I'm the Senate Art Director for Leadership New Jersey. As my class knows, I always save the last question for myself. So this worked out perfectly. Thank you all for coming. John, it's good to see you again. And I want to build on Stan's point. He wanted to make sure the other companies were pushing in the same direction with the larger companies. But I want to switch it around a little to say that, when we say Choose New Jersey, we should be thinking of our larger companies and mid-sized companies choosing our mid-sized and smaller companies as well. You need a part for something. If you are doing any sort of thing where you're looking for someone who doesn't, I know from the three classes that I've had, the tremendous diversity of talents and industries that were just represented in those classes. And that if you need something, there's probably someone in New Jersey who can fulfill that need. So it goes beyond having other people choose us and having other people decide to stay. It goes to the people who are here already, choosing other corporations, companies, small businesses that maybe nobody has reached a hand down to yet, if we can help hold them up. I think that'll go a long way to take this.
Can I just touch on, say, at least the three of us are covered by that. We report to Public Utilities here in New Jersey. Each year, we meet the President of the Board and review our spend and trend lines of spend, both with minority and women-owned businesses, as well as New Jersey-based businesses. And we report out at night. I'm not sure where that, if we can get some of that data out to Fox, but it's been a pretty dramatic upswing over the last five years or so, right Dennis?
Yeah.
One point I want to make, and I've heard a lot of mention of Princeton, and I'm the former mayor of Princeton, and Princeton does not consider Yale a rival. They're not even... But the one thing I want to talk about, the one word that I haven't heard is, very briefly, philanthropy. Because we're looking to higher ed to do all these wonderful things and partnering with business. We've got to promote philanthropy, because when you talk about Stern School of Business or the Wharton School, somebody came forward to underwrite that cost. And Princeton is an expert at that. So if we want to talk about getting philanthropy, getting, then getting the other universities to benefit from that, that's just another thought.
Okay, we're gonna, this program is being archived, and it will be available on the Leadership New Jersey website. So I guess what we'll do is slap it onto a DVD, send it to Shirley Tillman, and just say, we know that, you know, you don't even give a second thought to Yale, but whatever. All right, four things we gotta do. First thing, thank all these guys. Second thing, you have to bear with me, we've gotta go way back, because we want you to know that these are the folks who were nice enough to step up and help us create the reservoir of resources that allow this program to be, to take place. So be as, as you know what they are, who they are. BD, our host, NJCU, Providence Bank Foundation, whoops, wrong way, Fidelity Investments, Pershing LLC, and Varan. So thank you to them. If you are a past, present, or a future member of LNJ, the LNJ family, don't forget the celebration of leadership which occurs on November 30th this year. And finally, and this is actually, no disrespect meant to Carol, this is the P S, this is the true capstone. You now get to hear from the Executive Director of Leadership New Jersey, Tom Valesio.
Now, first, it's an honor, because, and I will only take two minutes of your time. It is an honor, because Michael Wilman is among the fathers of the Forum on the Future of New Jersey. So I want to ask us to thank Michael Wilman, Catherine Fish, and Andy S. Williams. As a number of you know, the Forum on the Future of New Jersey was a class project for the Class of 2001. And I have to tell you, it was a damn good class project. Thank you very much. We do thank our sponsors, we thank our supporters, we also thank our collaborators, including Choose New Jersey, Einstein's Alley, ING, Innovation New Jersey, NJVIA, New Jersey Chamber of Commerce, NJBiz, New Jersey Business, Southern New Jersey Development Council, and the Richard Stockton College of New Jersey. And we have a whole forum steering committee, and there are a number of you in the audience, but please raise your hand and thank you very much. but please raise your hand and thank you very much. You'll see on your agenda, actually, that we have a closing call to action. I would first offer my apologies. Phil Solerno is actually out ill, and he has caught whatever's been going around, and he's been out six, actually, for the last week or so. And he tried to make it in today, just couldn't. But just know that Phil Solerno, chair and the board of trustees, firmly supportive of this program. We have a number of board members here. Just want to thank, again, those board members, Doug Schoenberger, Margaret Peggy Pago, Diane Schwartz is here. We thank them very much for their activity. And Steve Morgan, our board members, thank you very much. And we have a number of graduate organization members, and thank you again to Bob Marshall, the chair of the graduate organization. All to the graduate organization that helped put this together. Thank you all very much. Last but not least, we have a call to action. And the question to you is, what are you going to do with what you've heard today? What are you going to do with this information? Where are you going to step forward? Well, in the next couple of weeks, we're putting together information, we actually have podcasting, so we will put this up on the web. We have a professional writer, Michelle Alfrin, who will actually be putting this together on a four-page document to be able to distribute. But we need to do more, folks. And so the whole question is, what's the return on investment for your time today? How important is it for New Jersey that we take the steps necessary so that people will choose New Jersey, so that we have a state of change, that we can create a culture of innovation and creativity? I ask each of you to take a couple of minutes, do it over the next couple of days, think about what's your personal commitment, and to email or to call us with your suggestions on what the call to action should be. What can you do individually? What can Leadership New Jersey do collectively to ensure that New Jersey becomes a state of change? Everything from Choose New Jersey to ARC, and I'm not afraid to use that term. We need a new transportation connection to New York. Each of you in this room needs to take proactive action to make sure that our transportation decisions are for all of us, and that in the next 10 years, we have a better New Jersey than today. Each of you will, when you leave today, be stuck in traffic. And that's not just rush hour, it happens all the time. And I will guarantee you, if we do not build a new connection to New York, and we do not improve our transportation trust fund, you will continue to be stuck in traffic. In some day, some of you will say you've had enough, as many New Jerseyans have. We need to hold elected and appointed officials accountable, we need to stand up and basically say what we're willing to pay for and what we're willing to do. If less with less is your motto, let's keep doing what we're doing. If less with more is your motto, we're going to have to tweak it a little bit. But if you want to do more with less, or I would argue more with more, stand up, take action, and say, we're tired, we want to change, and this is the state of change. Thank you all very much for seeing us.
We hope you enjoyed this Leadership New Jersey presentation of the 2010 Forum on the Future of New Jersey. If you'd like more information about Leadership New Jersey, please visit the website www.leadershipnj.org. We produce these programs in the studios of Professional Podcasts in Cherry Hill, New Jersey, on the web at professionalpodcasts.com. For everyone at Leadership New Jersey, this is Steve Lubetkin. Thank you for being with us, and take good care.